I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Cincilla.
Here.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Diddleman.
Here.
Alderman Seibert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
Roll call of department heads.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor. Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Jamie Maitre.
Here.
Tim Gregawitz.
Here.
Jim Schneider.
Here.
Lee Andrew Spearman.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo.
Here.
Debbie Belville.
Here.
Anissa McCaskill.
Mike Parks is here for Chuck Schaefer, everyone else is present. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, eternal and just.
We have no, we have no public hearing this evening, but before we get started with our meeting, I would like to start off by once again expressing mine, and I'm sure all of your condolences to Janet Schmidt's family. As you, by now, I'm sure everyone's heard, Janet passed away last Monday evening suddenly. There was a service on Thursday, and I would, we placed a flower at Janet's seat tonight. It was a shock to everyone, and I would ask, like to ask for a moment of silence as we think about and pause for the service Janet gave the city the last two and a half years. We truly thank her and her family for all of her time and commitment to Bellevue. Okay, at this time, we will move into public participation. If you'd like to address the council tonight, please raise your hand. When I call on you, step up to the microphone, give your name, and try to keep your comments to two to three minutes, and in good taste. So, is there anyone this evening that would like to speak? Hearing none, I'm going to close public participation. That doesn't happen very often. We will move on to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. The first thing I'd like to do, I don't believe there's anyone here from the Basic Initiative, is there? We kind of played phone tag today, and I, it might have been our fault, we didn't catch them last week, but the word of the month is empathy. Empathy is described as identifying and understanding others' feelings in order to get along better. The next thing I'd like to recognize is, up here in front of me, is the Abilene Trophy. And the Abilene Trophy is a joint effort of communities throughout the region that have been recognized by this prestigious group in the Air Mobility Command for community service and support of the military here at Scott Air Force Base. We won this in 2013, and it was presented to the region again this year in 2015 in April. To get it two out of the last three years is really unprecedented. It takes a lot of cooperation and partnerships from a lot of communities, and there's no doubt that being an Abilene Trophy winner two of the last three years was a, was a strong indicator why the military themselves chose Scott Air Force Base as being the best place to live for military families at the Air Force. And that's, that's a fabulous award they got recognized, and we really all were a part of this past year. I think our efforts in working with Bell Scott and so many other projects supporting the base, the support we give to the airpark, which is a big project for them, the support we give to people who are deployed, all these things and what all the other communities are doing is why the base and the communities have been recognized with these prestigious awards. So, it's, it's quite an honor. We have the good fortune of having this award in the building here for a few weeks, and if you get a chance afterwards and you want to come up and look at it, it's very impressive. But just know that it takes everyone's effort, and, and it's quite a, it's, it's a strong indicator of how the Air Mobility Command recognizes the Metro East in supporting Scott Air Force Base. So, the next thing I'd like to do is I'd like to recommend, and I don't know if there's a problem with if I would vote for these at the same time, ask for a motion, I got, we've got a couple vacancies on the library board. I'm recommending the appointment of Mary Carbon, a resident of the city of Bellevue, and a teacher at Henry Robb School, to serve the remaining of a three-year term expiring May of 2016 on the library board. And I'm also recommending the appointment of Helen Thompson, a resident of the city of Bellevue, and a retired teacher, I believe of 30 years, from Central Junior High, to serve a remaining of a three-year term expiring May 2017 on the board. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Diddleman. Any questions? Roll call for the appointments.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yeah, yeah, no one, no one asked, I know, that's, no one asked tonight. He wanted to make sure we offered public participation, but we did. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we go to the approval of the minutes. We have a special city council meeting of November 13th, 2015. What's your pleasure?
Motion to accept and file, second by Alderman Wiggington. The motion was by Alderman Tyler. Any discussion on the accepting of the minutes as they are presented? All in favor of having accepting and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I ask for a motion to approve the claims, payroll, and dispersments, and we have the, the claims, I think we had one payment in the special meeting last week, or last Monday night. The motion, there's a motion here to pay the claims and dispersments the amount, was that $2,183,0246.86? Motion by Alderman Anthony, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Ovian. Any questions? Roll call. Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion's carry. This time, I, there's a motion requested from the Board of Police and Fire Commission asking for someone to make a motion to approve the following promotions effective December 8th, 2015 at 12:00 a.m. Engineer Tom Kriegel to Captain and firefighter Shane Leach to Engineer. Motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Wiggington. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Abstain.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chief Poor, where you at? You want to introduce these two gentlemen?
The second row here have David Engineer and Captain Kriegel over in that row.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's nice to see family, I assume it's family, unless you just found some people outside. It's great to see these folks come and support you, so thank you for being here, and best of luck in your promotions. Okay, we move on now to the zoning board of appeals reports.
Case 35, November 15, Tendra Patel, a request for a special use permit for liquor license for hot shots liquor at 1809 Central Plaza Drive located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district, applicable section of zoning code 60-6-50 in Ward 1.
Move we approve?
Motion by Alderman Cincilla, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Seibert, do I hear discussion? All in favor of approval and have the proper ardent drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case 36, November 15, Mohammed Ali Bamu Quabell, a request for a special use permit to operate a used car dealership at 1013 Sherman Street located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district, applicable section of zoning code 60-6-50, Ward 1.
Do I hear a motion?
Your Honor, this came to us with a recommendation of only 10 vehicles. We'd like to remove that recommendation because with the used car business, they would be moving their own cars in and out, it's not like a regular parking lot, plus, in the used car business, the more you have to show people, the more money you can make, and that 10 may be too much of a limit, so we'd like to remove the limit of 10.
And the zoning board had recommended that?
They had recommended 10. They'd passed it unanimously with a recommendation of 10.
Is the lot bigger, big enough, I haven't gone out and surveyed this.
It's adequate enough to handle more cars. I felt like 10 was an arbitrary number. I've got a diagram here that I can pass around of how the proposed parking would be.
And with your diagram, how many that, would that take it up to?
20.
So, you want to have a cap of maximum of 20?
Yeah. 20, and then three visitors, uh, three, three customer park.
Well, yeah, that would be, I think that goes without, goes without saying.
Right.
But up to 20 cars for sale.
Yes.
Instead of the 10 that came out of the zoning board.
Would anybody like to see this?
I would.
Please say it.
There, taking the picture, too.
Mayor, I have a question. Was this a used car parking, uh, used car location previously?
It, it has been for a very long time. It's just that there's a new owner coming in. Actually, it's a new renter, same owner, but he's renting the property.
There was never a limit before.
No. There was no limit that I know of, and it has had quite a few cars on it before. It's just, I feel 10 is too few.
What kind of traffic do we have in the area?
161.
161, it's on.
Will it present a problem?
No.
It, it enters and exits on a side street rather than on 161 directly.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I agree with Alderman Hazel and Cincilla. Number one, I don't think we're in the business of regulating inventories. Uh, you know, they have to have goods to do business, and even 20, what if one day they sell four cars and bring in seven? It's their responsibility to make sure that they presented the merchandise right, that they got the room to put them.
Yeah.
You can only put so many cars in so many spots, but I don't think we need to regulate inventories.
I would move to strike.
Second.
So, just remove the limitation, period.
Yes, yeah.
So, your motion is to approve with no limit?
Yes.
And you agree with that?
I agree with that.
And you two both, would you, did you two make the motion second?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Other questions for the council?
Yes. At what point in time, okay, does the inventory become an issue?
Well, I think the inventory doesn't become an issue unless, unless there becomes nuisance concerns with the property. If the, if the cars in the lot have flat tires and they, and there's, I, I know, I think it's a hard surface lot, if I remember, but as long as there's not grass growing up and things like that, and they're not, there's evidence that they're not turning any cars over, I think then it becomes a nuisance issue for Mr. Sable's office. I think as long as they're turning property over and it's not, it's not junkers or some problem, that's, I guess, what would follow the nuisance.
So, as long as the vehicles, as long as the vehicles are parked in such a way to where they don't interfere with the city's right-of-way?
Well, I think that's a true statement, yeah. They can't, they can't, they can't park on city right-of-way. We would ask them, we would ask them to move that if they did, so that would be their limits. They have to park as many as they feel they feasibly can with getting them in and out with ease to test drive or whatever on their property.
I raised the question, okay, because there are some proprietors, if you will, that have so many vehicles on the lots that if you wanted to actually, if you were truly interested in test driving one, they would have to move five, six different vehicles in order to get to that vehicle that you were interested in.
And I, I think that that's what we're hoping to avoid. I understand what they're saying by no limits, but I think we're, what I hear you say, and I guess we'll just have to look at this for the future, we've had this only once before, I think Mr. Musgrove, if you and I talked, we would remember, a few years ago, we had a situation where they packed them in there like sardines, and it was virtually a storage lot and not a sales lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I think, you know, maybe that's something in the future we have to take a look at. And when you say a sales lot, it has to be able to get in, open the doors, and take a look at the vehicle or test drive it. Mr. Ovian?
Chairman, if you look at Kennedy out there on, on South Belt West, or North Belt West, it's hard to get in and out of his place right there at the corner of 74th Street. He's got so many cars out there that I don't even know how somebody comes onto his lot to park in order to look at a vehicle, to be honest with you. That's why I think the 20 is a good limit in order to go ahead and, and make sure that there's enough parking spaces for someone to come in and physically get out of their car and go ahead and take a look at, at a used car.
I understand what you're saying, but I would like to remind everyone that this has operated in this manner for 37 years without complaints.
Yeah, I don't remember it issued at this location before, I really don't. We have a mo, yes, sir?
I was calling for the question.
You ready to vote?
Yeah, I am, absolutely.
Roger, you okay with that?
No, I just want to say that, you know, any, any good business owners should use, we would hope, some kind of common sense. You know, any kind, any way you display your merchandise, your goods, your cars, whatever the case might be. You know, and if he's got too many cars on his lot, he's got to be the one, he's got to be responsible for moving them around, and it's just, it's his problem, it's his hassle.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve this with no stipulations of numbers, correct?
Correct, yeah, the motion was to.
To prove the zoning board's recommendation, have the proper ardent drawn, but to re, but to resend their restricted number of cars.
Correct.
Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
No.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Case 37, November 15, Dom and Shell Incorporated doing business as the edge. A request to rezone the property at 114 State Street from A1 single-family to C2 heavy commercial zoning district, applicable portion of zoning code 60-6-1 through 60-6-7 and 60-6-47 through 60-6-52, of Ward 5.
Motion by Alderman Diddleman, second by Alderman Sillsby. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Why are they, why do they want the rezoning? What do they, what's, what will?
It's a residence, and I think it's going to be probably eventually more parking. Correct, okay? So, it would be on, it's on the corner there.
Yeah.
And when we met with them before, this was talked about then, when they met with us, and, and with that particular house was talked about for some time as a potential area for growth or more parking. So, this, this is in, within their planning, planning arena that we talked about a year ago at least, or more, or more. So, we have a motion, a second, to approve this recommendation and have the proper ardent drawn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case 38, November 15, Max Convenience Stores, a request to rezone the property at 755 South Belt West from A1 single-family to C2 heavy commercial zoning district, applicable portion of zoning code 60-6-1 through 60-6-7 and 60-6-47 through 60-6-52, of Ward 5.
Okay, do we have a motion? Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Diddleman. And, and any questions? All in favor of this recommendation by the zoning board and have the proper ardent drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case 39, November 15, Max Convenience Stores, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license for Circle K at 755 South Belt West located in A1 single-family zoning district, applicable section of zoning code 60-6-50, of Ward 5.
If there's no objection, I'm going to ask him to read the next one with it because it's identical, okay?
Case 40, November 15, Max Convenience Stores, a request for a special use permit for a liquor license for Circle K at 1800 Lebanon Avenue located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district, applicable section of zoning code 60-6-50, of Ward 1.
Motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Diddleman, to approve these two recommendations by the zoning board and have the proper ardent is drawn. Any discussion?
Uh, Mayor.
Yes?
Are these, these two, well, three, are the, is it two Circle K's or three?
These two here are Circle K's that are taking over the QT's.
Okay.
And the other one is taking over the.
Casey's.
Casey's.
Okay.
What's that? But, but the, the one prior to that.
They're, they're all Circle K taking over Quick Trip. The first rezoning.
Oh, I'm sorry, the first one was the rezoning that was clearing up some old business.
Correct, and there's a.
I'm sorry, we had to.
SGP that goes along with that, and then also there's an SGP for the Lebanon location.
Right, and don't we have one pending then for the other situation?
That will be on agenda for zoning this.
I'm sorry, okay, I knew I read that. These are all for the two QT's. The, the first portion that we already approved, 11B4, somewhere, this has been a service station since I was a kid, and for some reason, when they built the QT, the appropriate zoning was not caught, and, and so it was not properly, so we, Garrett and I and Anissa talked and said that this was the time to have this cleaned up while we were going for the special use for the liquor, to get it straightened out, because it's, it's, to my recollection, it was a shell station years ago, then it sat empty for many years before QT bought it. It's, it's been a filling station for a long, 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 probably a minimum of 40 years, maybe longer than that, probably 50 plus, so, so that's what, that's just cleaning up a zoning mistake and error.
And the liquor licenses, the QT's didn't have liquor licenses?
Oh, yeah, they did, but they, but our ardent requires new ownership to go through the business occupancy and to require a special permit for liquor.
Okay, thank you.
And the liquor license, they can sell whatever they want, including packaged liquor, once they get the liquor license.
In their particular class, they can sell packaged liquor. They will be notified about the changes we just amended to our thing about the iced individual cans.
And what about half pints, that could be inclusive?
They'll be allowed to do what everybody else is allowed to do.
Okay.
But they will, the, the ours, we're going to have, and for the, you folks are both from the new ownership, right?
A council.
Okay, okay, before you would, and I know we still have to pass the ardent yet later in the meeting, I just would like to give you my card because I, they tried to call today to set up a meeting. I want to try and meet with those zone managers or whatever, okay? All righty. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor to have the proper ardent drawn for these two, for these two, 11B5 and 11B6, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any further discuss?
There's an alarm going off in here, is anybody tripped? Anybody hit the buzzer? It's possible.
I've got one right in front of me, so it could have been me, but I don't know, not on purpose.
I didn't. We're okay. But it's nice to know, nice to know they checked. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to approve, have the proper ardent drawn for these two recommendations from the zoning board for these two cases. But there's no further questions, all in favor of these two motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications.
12A, the New Ish Isha Project Academy Training Boys to Become Men and Girls to Become Women is requesting support in order to cover the fees for the use of the Nichols Center, rooms 203 through 205 for 12 Saturdays, starting February 6th through April 23rd. Graduation for the candidates is scheduled for April 30th of 2015. The total amount for both rooms for the 12 weeks is $480.
Alderman Cincilla?
I move we approve with a stipulation that it meets the, the Parks Department's schedule.
Yeah, okay. Do I hear a second?
Hello?
Second?
I'm trying to check the dates.
First of all, second to have discussion. Who's willing to have, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Do we have a second by Alderman White? Discussion?
I'm just talking about the dates.
Well, the dates, I think we agree that, we, we've got Debbie Belville and Reverend Curry are still trying to work out some of the dates.
They got 2015, April.
Uh, no, that was, that was an error there, typo. They're talking about the spring of this coming year, starting in February, going into 2016, but they are still trying to work out some dates because some of those rooms are booked, and we're, it, this is a group of at-risk children that are youth that Reverend Curry's working with, and we're, we're very happy to help him with this program, but they do have to coordinate some room times, and they'll do that after tonight's approval, okay? We have a motion, yes, sir?
Mayor, I have a question. Is this coming out of the Parks Department budget?
It's just a matter of not charging for the room fees for this program.
Okay.
Because we're not, there's nothing that we're putting up, other than we're agreeing to waive the fees. This is a program that Reverend Curry's project here is, we think, very, got much This is a program that Reverend Curry's project here is, we think, very, got much potential of helping keep some at-risk students, potential youth, not to become problems for law enforcement and others, so we think it's a good investment.
And, Your Honor, it is nonprofit.
It's a nonprofit, yes, yes. It's through his church, actually, and some others that are, this program is not brand new, it's just new to this Bevel to be introduced. So we have a motion and we have a second to approve basically allowing him to work out the room details with the Parks Department and to waive the fees. All in favor of that motion? Let's go ahead and call for a roll call because it involves waiving fees. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Motion carries.
12B.
Yes.
St. Teresa Catholic Schools requesting to hold the STEM Lab Cosmic Glow Walk Event on Friday, March 4th, 2016 to take place at St. Teresa's Catholic Church, beginning at 6:30 p.m. The route is attached here, too.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman White, do I hear discussion? This was done not too long ago, it was successful, no problem, this is a repeat of that. All in favor of this recommendation, or this request for communication signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have no petitions, we have resolution. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution number 3233. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Kinsella, to read that resolution by title only. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Like it noted that I abstain.
Okay. Even on the reading by title only? For that, too? Okay. We note that? Okay, so would you read it?
Yeah. Resolution 3233, a resolution for a bank loan.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion get approved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Dillman, to approve resolution 3233. Discussion? Yes, sir.
I know, we talked about, how, if we get the loan, how are we going to pay it back? Where's the money come to pay it back?
General fund. It's got to be paid with general fund. It's a three-year loan we're looking at, right, Jamie?
Payable for three years, even principal over three years, so it'll be about $400,000 just to here. I don't have any money to.
Yeah. And, so we're borrowing $300,000.
Right. Do we have any idea where, I know we're going to work on the budget within the next few months.
The budget, the budget just went out to the department heads last week, and we'll start hearing about the budget process right after the first year.
So we're going to have to cut $100,000 somewhere along the way to make this up?
Well, we have to take a look at what was in last year's budget that might not be repeated this year, and maybe it's, it might be an easier suggestion. Jamie and I haven't really sat down and looked at it line by line yet, but we owe this money, and it has to be used, it cannot be TIF money to repay it, and since we're going this route of not demoing the method of Meredith Home at this time, we have to repay it, and so this would be something that we're obligated to do.
Right.
Yes.
You know, one thing about this, too, we have to repay this, there's no ifs, ands, or buts. We got lucky with this $200,000 settlement. I think the interest rate is very equitable, I think the terms are very fair over a three-year period of time, the way they're asking for this repayment, and especially with that $200,000 that kind of fell in our lap. I think this is the time that we've got to make it good with Bruce Cook.
No, no, I agree, and also, you should have the memo on your desk, the word came back this afternoon that the state should be repaying us all the motor fuel money they owe us, the use tax and the gaming, not that that solves all of our problem, but it does make me feel a lot better that at the time we're taking on this debt, that all that repayment should be coming relatively promptly to the city, which certainly helps us immensely. The gaming money alone would be an example of probably the first year's payment, at least, right there, wouldn't it, Jamie? So right, right there, which we don't have that specified right now, so that's probably one way to help us get through the first year right off the bat. Any other discussion? Yes, sir?
Was that included in the $400,000 that Governor Browner, when they had allowed to go ahead and come forward? Or was that, is that a different issue? It was in the paper today.
I didn't read today's paper. I just got the email I put in front of you just a little while ago. Aaron got it this afternoon, came off the, off my email. I can't really address that because I didn't see that article this morning to see how that separates out, Rafi. So we have a motion, we have a second, to approve this loan. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
I have to abstain on the basis of my employment and the affiliation with a much larger entity that is in the lending business. Thank you.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Motion carries. We move on to ardentance. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Ardentances 7914, 7915, 7916, 7917, 7918, and 7919. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Dillman.
Do you want to do a group?
By title only, is there, there's no problem, we read them as a group? You have questions, sir?
Yeah, except for the change that we made to 7515.
Please note the 7515 change on that ardentance, that recommendation from the zoning board that we changed that to no limit on the number of cars, vehicles, okay? Everybody understand that? We have a motion and we have a second. If there's no objection, this is to read them by title only and as a group. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
15A, ardentance 7914 of 2015, case 35, November 15, Tahendra Patel. 15B, ardentance 7915 of 2015, case 36, November 15, Mohammed Ali Bamu Quabell. 15C, ardentance 7916 of 2015, case 37, November 15, Diamond Shell Incorporated doing business